Okay, good evening. Welcome to Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is September 21st, 2020. We're starting a few minutes late. Obviously, we're living in the world right now. We have dependent technology. So this is a virtual meeting. This is a Zoom virtual meeting. Zoom number, meeting number 987-8112-9973. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Mary Lane, present. Roxanne McDonald?
Here.
Michael Mead?
I got it.
Madal Mosab?
Here.
Mary Petchikoff?
Here.
James Storp?
Here.
Chair Hussein Barry?
Here. Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting. Regular meeting, August 10th, 2020. Special meeting, August 19th, 2020. Close session, August 19th, 2020. Audit Committee meeting, August 24th, 2020. Make any necessary correction and move approval of these minutes.
So moved?
Support.
We have a motion that was moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Petchikoff. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Mosab?
Yes.
Petchikoff?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Barry?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again in what we, I agree, is kind of becoming a normal, different way we're conducting these board meetings. I appreciate your patience while we worked out a little bit of a technical glitch there. And I've rewarded you with your patience with what I hope will be one of the shortest series of President's comments in my time here with you. I have three things I want to address, and I'll be doing them rather quickly. The first is, I have informed you all, and many individuals on our campus are now aware because I just sent an email around the campus informing that the dean of the School of Liberal Arts, Dr. Jennifer Ernst, has announced her resignation. I'm saddened by the news, but I understand she will be going with her family as her spouse takes a new position. And I originally reported that it was in Ohio, but that's, I was incorrect. It's actually in Indianapolis. I quickly scanned the list of attendees here, and I don't think I saw Dr. Ernst here. But I still would like to make a few comments about her. She was the dean of the School of Liberal Arts, and still is, but she was the dean when I arrived here, and she's been a good friend to me and a good colleague to many, many individuals at the college. I, as I mentioned, just circulated a statement via email to the entire college about Dr. Ernst. And one thing I wanted to underscore was that she was really, really on the up and up, and she was a rising leader in higher education, and frankly, any human endeavor because of her team and team focus, her hard work, and her goodwill. And I enjoyed being able to watch her give a presentation on behalf of Henry Ford College in Seattle earlier this year, and I was just so proud of the professionalism and precision that she carried with her and the way she represented Henry Ford College. So she'll, she will be missed, and I have reached out to her to tell her that individually, but I know I spook on behalf of the entire board that we are saddened by her decision to leave the college, but of course, we are grateful for her great work, and we wish her all the best. The second item is really two items. I want to spend some time congratulating many of my colleagues from collective bargaining units. The first collective bargaining units that I want to talk about are the units that represent our faculty. Those would be the AFO and AFT 1650. We involved ourselves in deep negotiations with both of those groups to help us get through the pandemic, and I can report to you that our students were very well-served by the Herculean effort that both groups' members, the full-time faculty and part-time faculty, expended during the pandemic, particularly in March and April, as we transitioned almost 90% of our winter classes to the online or distance modality. And I made comments about this in my State of the College address last month, but I want to reiterate here that it simply would not have been possible without the excellent teamwork and excellent professionalism exhibited by both of those groups. And it was a success. It was a smashing success. And of course, administrators and SSA members and exempt members were supports in that, but the frontline workers in that instance were full-time and part-time faculty, and I'm grateful for their efforts. I hope, and I, and I, I trust that the administration's attempt to give some credence to that great work by noting some compensation for the extra work, extra week of work that those individuals undertook in the winter term is at least some semblance of the board and my appreciation for the hard work that those individuals undertook. And then, of course, the part-time and full-time faculty went right, right back at it, helping us develop a return-to-campus team along with you, the board, and stakeholders from across, around the campus. And of course, this return-to-campus plan will not be perfect. It can't be. I wish it were, but it just can't be. And we're going to have to keep changing it and updating it, but the, the faculty members that took part in that process have been fantastic as teammates, and the plan is working well, and we'll continue to adjust it as we see necessary in consultation with all the collective bargaining unit leaders. And then I'll just lastly note that I have some congratulations to you, board members, for overseeing negotiations with the collective bargaining unit, AFT 1650, John Sackowski, Vice President Sackowski, Vice President Gonko, Vice President Nealan, and Vice President Clark helped guide negotiations for the extension of the 1650 contract. And I want to congratulate John McDonald and his negotiating team for representing his members so effectively during that difficult time. And it was difficult because you can't sit at a table. You can't talk to each other and understand each other and have those person-to-person cues. But, and, and most people are under more stress than they ordinarily were as a result of this pandemic. And to have the result that both sides accomplished, which was a two-year extension of the contract, a reasonable compromise from both sides that puts the college in a, in a strong position, and also, I think, gives at least a significant amount of respect to the hard work that faculty do and their need for certain things in their contract, I think, is worthy of congratulations to both sides. Similarly, I want to congratulate the leadership of the SSA Union. That's led by the President Kim Keir and her negotiating team for working their way through a difficult process also and reaching a tentative agreement for a one-year extension of their collective bargaining agreement that is actually was ratified by their membership. And I, again, as, as I said about the 1650 negotiations, this was a difficult time because you simply couldn't be together to look each other in the eye and figure out the best results. But teamwork prevailed, and I think both sides feel that it's a fair and just resolution. It's a short-term resolution. In that instance, it's a one-year extension, and we'll be right back negotiating, I'm sure, sure, very soon because we're now two years into that one, I'm sorry, two months into that one-year extension. But I, I want to congratulate you, trustees, for guiding the negotiations from the administration side and also President Keir and her administration, and particularly her negotiating team. And I would be remiss if I didn't note that our new Executive Director of HR, Dr. Ladonna Holly, and Vice President Lori Gonko, and the HR team were the leaders of that negotiations. So that is my full compliments and comments for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any questions for President Cavallone? Trustee Petchikoff?
Well, I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I want to kind of piggyback on President Cavallone's comments, and I would like to personally thank all the negotiating teams after having spent 10 years on the board. I've been through negotiations many times and recognize that everybody always wants a little more and walks away with a little less. But that balancing act and compromise is what we do in order to protect the institution and the outcome of everyone's well-being for future negotiations and making sure that everyone feels respected and rewarded down the line as well. And I'd just like to share my thanks to the negotiating teams for all of the respective unions that we interacted with because I know it is tough under normal circumstances. And this year, everyone has been put to the test and extremely overworked in, in their ability to move forward under times that we had never anticipated. And I really appreciate the, all the efforts from everyone out there who have moved our institution forward and protected those things that make our college what a great college it is.
Thank you. Trustee Lane?
President Cavallone, you mentioned the return to learn, return to campus plan, which we all appreciate, and we all know how agonizing it was trying to figure out the myriad permutations that could occur. But I noticed in the read over of it that always as the last option, there's a paper form that people can fill out if they don't have a laptop, tablet, or a phone. I, in thinking over that, I wondered how many people have used that for us to have some kind of indication of people that either have technology failure or don't have access to adequate technology. Do you know how often that's been used at all?
I don't know that. I can give you my own anecdotal observation because I am coming to campus each day, and those that need to make use of the paper, sometimes I can see where they are. But I'm happy to find out if we're tracking that. I suspect that we are not, at least not in a, I don't want to get out ahead of myself, Trustee Lane, but here's my, my supposition. I suspect we're keeping records with the actual paper copies, but the, the data accumulation is not nearly as sophisticated as it is being taken on the app. But I'm happy to look into and report back to the board what we do know, and if, if we do have numbers to report, I'll report it to the board. I, I, I'm not sure if I'm reading your question correctly, but if your question is regarding getting some kind of at least corollary data about whether students and staff have access to technology, I do feel very confident that we have made significant strides in communicating, particularly with students, about their needs vis-à-vis technology. And we are making significant progress every week with engaging them and helping them gain access to technology where, where it's necessary. And I can tell you, that starts from the frontline of enrollment services all the way to faculty and the, the engagement of students who need access to technology. I, I feel very confident that Henry Ford College students are not languishing without technology because we worked so hard to get it out there in the beginning. And candidly, I'm not hearing it from faculty or enrollment staff that that's a problem that we have not answered yet.
I'm glad to hear that because we wouldn't send out a carpenter to do a job without their skills. And these days, those electronic devices are so important for students. So I'm glad to hear that. I was hoping to hear that, and I'm glad to hear it. I would like to ask one other question then. I was expecting that you would give us a brief update on a future for frontliners. I know you were chosen, you were selected to be with the governor, so it's a distinct honor for you and for our college. I know that there's probably not much you can tell us, but whatever you can tell us is, we're listening. I am.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. The Futures for Frontliners program is the first time that the state of Michigan has attempted to pull off a tuition-free college grant program. Now, you know that various parts of our state have done that. Kalamazoo Promise was a world, well, probably a world, but certainly a national leader on that front. We also have the Detroit Promise Program that is a leader in that. But the state has never tried to pull it off. The governor, when she was elected, noted she wanted to try and do something, and she actually passed legislation called My Opportunity and My Reconnect, which were tuition-free college access programs. And while they were passed under a legislature buying into, and she signed the ideas of how this would work, they couldn't find the funding because the pandemic hit. And in the CARES Act funding, the second federal legislation package that was CARES II that gave the significant amount of funding across our country, but particularly to higher education institutions, each governor was given roughly $98 million to spend as the governor in each state saw fit to support education. And the team here at Henry Ford College was pushing quite hard on trying to make sure that a significant amount of that $98 million would be flowing towards, one, community colleges, and, two, the community colleges that were most hurt by the pandemic. Now, the governor, about two weeks ago, announced that about $75-ish million of that, roughly $100 million, was going to go to bridging the digital divide in rural parts of our state and mostly in the K through 12 areas of our state, which left about $24 million. And then two weeks later, just last week, the governor announced that that $24 million would go towards the federal, I'm sorry, the Futures for Frontliners program. Now, that program is a last-dollar program where students who wish to access community college and, and/or GED can approach community colleges and apply for all financial aid, particularly federal financial aid and any shortcoming in tuition dollars. In other words, anything that they could not support themselves through federal financial aid, this Futures for Frontliners program will take that $24 million from the CARES Act and devote it towards the rest of that tuition expense for students in community colleges. And this is limited to people who were frontline workers from, I believe, April till June in the pandemic of 2020 in the state of Michigan. And it is also limited in the application period. In fact, applications are, I believe, either just about to start opening or are open now, but I know that they close at the end of December. And at that time, the first enrollee cohort at community colleges, I hope, across our state will begin in January. We're really not sure how many people will be interested, but I am encouraged to tell you that the governor's office contacted me the week after the press conference that you mentioned, Trustee Lane, and the website had already had 170,000 visits. And that website is easy to find. You can Google it. It's a, it's a state of Michigan website. And in fact, if you want to see the website that we have at Henry Ford College, I can compliment the web team and Rhonda DeLong for standing up our website the day after that press conference took place, and it also has information about it. But that website will tell you that the, the definition of frontliners, in other words, those that are eligible to apply to this process is pretty broad, and it's intended to do so. And we're hopeful that this will drive individuals who might have otherwise not seen themselves as a potential college student to try it out. And we're already starting to build the mechanisms to support students who might not otherwise consider themselves or think they had the finances to attend college such that they can be successful. It's not enough just to get them into Henry Ford College. It, it will be another big step to make sure that they have the value that we know an education can bring, which is making themselves individually better citizens, and then by general speaking, make the society around them better. I know that the governor, in speaking directly to her, the reason why she is funding this is because she believes very fervently that we need to increase the percentage of Michigan citizens who have some post-high school credential, whether that be a credential, certificate, or all the way to a bachelor's or associate degree. And she's put out in her, you know, my team does KPIs, or Key Performance Indicators. One of Governor Whitmer's main key performance indicators is to do attempts to raise the percentage in Michigan of individuals in this state who have a post-secondary credential to 60%. We're not anywhere near it now, but I think this program will help us move in that direction.
Well, thank you also for mentioning certificates. There was a lot about certificates in the resolution that you sent us and that we will be voting on. So I hope that we can all, as a board, as a higher-end community, I hope that everybody can talk up the certificates. I have, of course, a huge, fond place in my own heart for higher education, and I just think that it makes life a lot better. I'm enrolled right now in a, in a online course. So I, I just know, having, you know, doing my homework and listening to things lately, that it changes my perspectives on things. I'm much more argumentative now with everybody around me about-
We noticed that, Mary.
So, yeah, that, but it's, it's good. So thank you for that. I really think the governor is doing a great thing, and I think that all of us need to push that forward. So it's an important thing. Thank you.
Well, I have to tell you, I'm sorry that I went so long, but I'm passionate about this. I think this is a real chance for us to leverage what is our real public good here at this college, which is to change lives through education at the easiest access point available. And we're, we're getting, we're getting traction. Rhonda DeLong tells me that I've got an interview with the New York Times tomorrow on this, on this program. So this is, this is the first time this state has tried to pull it off statewide, and it's, in my understanding, the first time that any governor or state has tried to do this during this pandemic. So we're going to lean in on it, and I haven't even devised what our goal will be, but it will be getting as many students as we can in and successful. And I don't even know how to start the guess about how many students that'll be, but I'll tell you, the governor's office has said that 40,000, 40,000 Michigan citizens have applied already across the state. And we're going to be part of the attempt to give education to those people.
I'd be sorry about President Cavallone. Thank you. We'll go to Trustee McDonald, please.
Yes, President Cavallone, you had said that the definition of the frontliner was broad. Generally speaking, when I think of frontliner, I usually think of the medical personnel. Does that include, or does her description include essential workers?
Yeah, in fact, that's what actually is the definition, is the governor's definition of essential workers from the executive orders before. And the website's pretty slick. If you go to it, and I'll forward it to the board after this meeting, the state website, it, it answers all these questions, and it includes the grocery store clerk that helps you get through that process. It includes the sanitation worker who is helping. It, it is very broad, intentionally so. Now, the window from which you can get in this is narrow. We've got basically until now, until the end of this year, to get people in this cohort. But the essential worker is, is really a broad definition.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Mosab?
So, President Cavallone, are we shifting our marketing toward this program? Are we putting in ads to market it? And from what I heard, is that the applicants apply to the state first, and then they apply to the college? Or can they apply to the college and then apply for the program?
Answer your second question first, Trustee Mosab. The, the short answer is yes. They, they are initially getting vetted by the state, and the state has two agencies looking through this. One is the state's Labor and Economic Opportunity Organization called LEO, and then the finance arm of this, or the evaluation of money being spent, will be through Treasury. The two heads of those departments are Jeff Donafrio, who's the director of LEO, who I've talked to about this, and then, of course, the state treasurer is Rachel Eubanks, who's been on our campus before. And they're both, they're both friends of mine and, and ready to lean in on this. And it looks to me like, and we're kind of still seeing how it goes, but it looks to me like LEO will set up the application process, and Treasury will track it and then communicate out results to individual colleges. And they've required us to name individual liaisons for the Futures for Frontliners program to the, the state government, and it, and it will be LEO who they're interacting with. And I've named Dr. Herbst to be our liaison. But I have to tell you, I won't be far from the action. It's something I'm passionate about. And I'll be, I'll be talking with him very, very often about it. And let's see, Trustee Mosab, you had the first question. I skipped right over it.
Marketing for the program?
Thank you for reminding me. I, I've talked with Rhonda DeLong about this, and I, I knew that trustees were, were interested in what we would do to try to drive enrollment in this short window. And Rhonda DeLong and I have reached out to a consultant who might have some ability to discuss and try to drive marketing for a very micro-targeted campaign. I'm not ready to announce whether we're ready to move in that direction or not, but we are going to. And you will already see that if you go to our website. We are going to market this individually, but we, to be as sophisticated and quick as we think we should be here, we may actually have to go outside of the college to get some push on this, very much like we considered a pretty sophisticated nimble move that the board pushed us, and I think rightly pushed us to do in this kind of gap summer when we were trying to drive enrollment. So, Trustee Mosab, I'm not surprised you're asking. I'm working on it, and I plan to report that out to the board when I have more information.
Thank you.
Dr. Mead, please.
Just a specific question. Do the applicants have to have a high school diploma?
Yes, but they can, they can get funding to get that. If they would prefer to get that first, then go to community college.
Okay, good.
Are there any more questions for President Cavallone? Trustee Lane?
Not a question, but I would like to thank Rhonda DeLong for making sure this year that Henry Ford College is actually visible on the billboards by the expressway.
You're welcome.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. You said that if someone needed a high school diploma, they could do that and then continue. So to be part of the cohort, you could, I'm assuming, sign up for the cohort and actually start your program at a later date?
I don't know that, Trustee McDonald. I, I'll find out and get, and get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mead?
Just have, I didn't realize that the negotiations were being done virtually. I don't know why it didn't dawn. I mean, that was kind of foolish of me. But now, I'm curious about what is, what are the observations of the people that have done it? What are the pros and cons of negotiating virtually?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, you probably don't have enough time to hear all the responses to that. I can see Vice President Sackowski smiling there, and I'm, I'm sure my friend John McDonald is smiling where, where he's sitting now. I think I can safely speak for all of us who are in these negotiations. It's much better. I mean, it's much better to be sitting in the same room with someone when you're trying to come to a difficult resolution on countervailing and difficult issues. But I have to tell you, you can look, you can Google. You can look at newspapers right now, and you can see where other higher end institutions have not been able to accomplish the kind of difficult negotiations that we have. So I'll tell you, Dr. Mead, it's not easy. I would much rather do it the other way, but I'm proud of my teammates in the collective bargaining units and the vice presidents who helped me negotiate with, on your behalf, that we did accomplish what we accomplished.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? President Cavallone, thank you very much. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
The next item, our action item, citizen participation. I'd like to verify with Kathy DiBietrio that we have no blue cards as of this point?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So there are, there's no citizen participation, which takes us directly to special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Anybody?
Are we voting on the district's item individually, or is it with the agenda items?
It'll be, it'll be part of the regular-
Unless you want it pulled. I mean, this-
Yeah.
Motion. Trustee Lane, you had something to say?
I have two quick questions on two and three, and then I would like to pull number six.
So we're pulling number six.
Two and three. I could just ask the quick question.
Ask the questions if you put the motion on the table.
Okay.
Anybody want, any more action items? Anybody want pulled? Trustee McDonald?
I don't want it pulled, but I just wanted to, number five, we had some back and forth about the language in there, and there was some confusion. When the language was corrected, it still said that there was three programs and only two were listed. Now we find out that we still have three programs. So just want to make sure that that's cleaned up.
You know what? I was going to mention that as well, Trustee McDonald, because when I read it at first, and I read the programs were discontinued, I was pretty shocked. And then I read the, there was reading further below, dropping down. It said two, and then there was a strike through several, then there was another strike through. So, yeah, there, I, I read it, and it, it was attached to the agenda, which was kind of odd, but it has typos in it for sure.
Yeah, it needs some- Yeah, it needs some cleaning up.
Yes.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, may I address that question?
Let's, let's wait till the motions on the table.
Okay.
Trustee Moser, did you want seven pulled? Let's.
I have a question on it. I think Dr. Milak was on the line, so.
Trustee Lane, go ahead and read the motion.
Action items numbered one through seven is recommended in this agenda, except for six.
So moved?
We have.
Support?
Trustee Thorpe, supported by trustee McDonald. President Cavill, let's go ahead, and why don't you get us started then? You wanted to address.
The resolution.
Yes, okay. I believe trustee McDonald and trustee Lane are making comments about action item number five. And I'll just tell you that this is a state-required document that tells the state of Michigan, this is basically how we can show that we are creating strategic value or economic value to the region that we serve. And that is a portion of a rubric that the state legislature uses to decide some part of what a community college will receive in funding. And it is something that this college, since that rubric has been instituted by the legislature, since then, that this college and all of the colleges that rely on state funding, the state community colleges have to, have to file this, this information. So let me just address the one point that if there are typos in this, and if there are some issues that, and I'm going to address those, rest assured that this is not an accreditation thing. It is not, it is not something that is setting out our bylaws or our structures, or even setting out what we're doing as an institution. So I'm glad that to have the errors and adjustments noted, because we can fix them. But rest assured that, that if these errors were not caught, there would be no, no penalties to us. So the, the real question here centered around, and I'm glad I got a chance to talk to Dr. Milak about this today, because it centered around our relationship with the Dearborn Public Schools and the Early College. And I won't go into the rabbit hole, but you know that we, we produce education for high school students here in three different ways: dual enrollment, collegiate academy, and the Early College Program. And this question only relates to the Early College Program, under which we have basically three curricula focuses. And the state of Michigan must approve those, and they are health careers, advanced manufacturing, and then, two years ago, we stood up the, the track for pre-education. And there was some confusion in my mind about where that pre-education stood. And the reason there was some confusion was because I've now had a chance to see the writing from Shannon Peterson and Michael Nealan that the state of Michigan authorizes early colleges, usually just one per institution, like Henry Ford College. I don't know this, but I surmise it's because most institutions aren't as in, aren't as aggressive in doing dual enrollment programs like we are. And so, as we stood up the second one, which was the, the two health careers and advanced manufacturing, we had basically two early colleges. And then when we stood up the third one, which was the pre-education, the state of Michigan preferred us to not have three, but to have the third one part of the second one. And what I'm told was simply for a coding mechanism for state tracking, which is why some people said, well, the early, the early college for pre-education was denied. Now, I understand why that sounds like, well, we're not doing it, but that was not what was probably the best way to say that. What we should have said is that the early college for pre-education continues to exist. It's got, it's, it's got two cohorts going through it, one freshman year and one sophomore year. And it is actually been, for the state's tracking purposes, it's been rolled into part of one of the pre-existing early colleges at Henry Ford College. So I hope to goodness that that explanation lends some clarity to this. But my concern is, you know, explaining this leaves you with even more questions. And if that's the case, I'm happy to deal with them now or at any other time.
Are there any questions? Trustee McDonald?
I don't have a question. That did clarify it, and I got the information from Shannon earlier. So I appreciate you giving me that. And I understand how anything coming out, like in the resolution form, doesn't necessarily, if there's typos and stuff, doesn't affect what we get from the state, but it certainly has, it certainly reflects on us as a college and an institution of higher education. So I think that it is important that we have clerical errors and other errors corrected when we send out anything with our name on it.
I think you're right.
I agree with you, trustee McDonald. Thank you for catching those two items to deal with. Any other comments or questions for President Cavill on this item? Okay, moving along. Let's go to trustee Lane. You had comments on two and three, and a question on number six.
No, I wanted six pulled, but two and three are quick questions. On number two, I remembered this machine, Bill Barber mentioned this machine when we, we traveled together. And this, my question is, these are very specialized machines, and there, we have two labs that are being built, one on the College Main, and then the other one at M-Tech. Do we have sufficient need for two labs for the Haas machine? It seems like it's a very, I don't know how big the program is.
Well, this, this trustee Lane comes to us from the grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. And I see Vice President Sackowski wanting to raise his hand. Do you want to talk about this, Vice President Sackowski?
It's, just to lend some background to this, is that the, the Ralph Wilson Foundation grant is paying for it, but the intent is to have these programs over at M-Tech due to the recruitment and the additional students associated with the Ralph Wilson Foundation. So yes, there'll be two locations dealing with it, because it couldn't be handled all at the tech, tech building. So the funding for the equipment coming through the foundation would allow us to upgrade and use the M-Tech area for, for that teaching of, of those students related to that grant.
So this is kind of a temporary thing, that it's at the main college? It'll be, it's foreseen to be mostly at M-Tech?
Just the Ralph Wilson portion of it. The, that, and that's the growing piece, piece of it. And the intent is that, you know, you throw the seed money at it with the Ralph Wilson Foundation to grow the program. The program's intent is for it to continue to grow and be maintained.
Okay, it's just, it seems curious to me that it would be located in two different places, rather than to put it all in one place. So that's my befuddlement.
Okay.
Trustee Lane, the Ralph C. Wilson grant is to stand up an early middle college, which is directly related to the attempt to, for a much broader spectrum than the early college we have for Dearborn Public Schools. This, this will be stood up for participating high school students from around the region who want access to this early middle college that will stand up skills for skilled trades. And that is, that is taking place at the M-Tech location. And that will be for those, those individuals in the early middle college that the Ralph C. Wilson grant is funding. Now, this, this equipment that's on main campus will not be, will not be limited to those students from the early middle college sponsored by the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. So the, your question makes sense, and I hope my answer shows that it's, they're actually distinct needs that make, that make the purchase wise.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Petrikov?
I just wanted to make an observation. Generally, when we have these kinds of fundings that are coming from someplace else, it's noted under the bids of where, of where it's coming from. We didn't have it this time, and it might help to clarify a little bit for us, you know, if it's coming from this pot of money or that pot of money, because I didn't see that it's
It's not.
coming.
Oh, it's not in the motion, but it's in the board report.
Board report.
I, I didn't see it in the board report, because I looked for that, because I saw that it wasn't.
Second pair.
Maybe I'll have to look at it again then.
It's, it's the workforce development grant from Ralph C. Wilson Foundation provides 100% of the funds for the new purchases.
I, I read it. I guess I, I don't know. It's sticking in my mind.
That happens.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Trustee Lane, you had a question regarding number three?
So on number three, we have an online orientation software, which was originally, the contract was April 2014, then it was renewed in 2017, which is all in good. And I certainly understand why we might need a specific software for orientation, because we can't be there in person and point to things and show things and so on. But I just wanted to ask if there, since it, it's a continuation of a contract that was signed twice previously, is this, this must be modified so that it's a different, slightly different presentation of this contract? Am I right on that?
Vice President Sackowski, do you know the answer to that?
Would be an addendum to the original contract noting the new date range from November 2020 through October 2023, and the cost factors, but the original contract would stand as is, other than this just being, this would being an addendum. Now, the intent is to do this, timing-wise, you know, you don't want to use the virus as, as an excuse here, but it kind of crept up on folks. November 2020, if we didn't do a continuation, you're talking a complete review and complete RFP for this type of software, but then that takes implementation, training, et cetera. So we're, the, the word from, you know, the enrollment services area is that one more time on this, and then during this period of time, we'll be looking at different options to, to compare us with in the future.
Well, my intent is certainly not to make a headache for you for enrollment services. I guess my presumption is, but I haven't heard someone state it explicitly, that this, although it is continuing, and we're doing it timely, I hope that they've altered whatever they're providing, so that these online services are being stressed more in light of the pandemic.
Sure.
Trustee Moser, you had a question?
I guess Fred must be in on, on the meeting too, because he keeps sending me some text messages. And that has to do with.
He is.
Yes, it's a three-year renewal at the same price of what it was back in 2014, no price change, and that the intent is to look at this more closely before the next term period of renewal comes around.
Thank you, Fred. Got a question on number seven?
Yes, my question for this one is about, what are the amounts of PPE are we getting? I'm not sure if we received a detailed report on this, that I have missed, but can Dr. Milak elaborate on this?
I think he's in Hawaii or something.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I have the background on here.
Nice background.
Background. Let me see if I can fix that. Sorry.
Can stay, it's fine.
I went, it is all right. I went into a principal meeting, and I told them they're working so hard. I said, look, you deserve to go there too. So, last Friday. And actually, David's putting together a lot of background images, so like whether we can be in the Portland Library or all over the district. So with the Zoom, we've moved out, we're going to have a lot of different places we can be. So trustee Moser, to answer your question, we are doing this kind of to be proactive, so we don't have the detail, per se, because what we want to do is stock up, basically. This is to be safe. And rather than coming to you every, rather than waiting, we felt, and I talked to Tom Wall and Mark Andrews, we want to stock up, because we want to be ready for the fact of in-person instruction, although right now, we don't have it. We feel we're good with the amount of PPE we have currently, but since this was a county bid, we are having issues with getting, we're not sure, but we're having issues with sanitizer and wipes that are hard to get. And so why we're doing this is to make sure that we can get out there quickly and get the product. We may be going to smaller vendors as well, you know, to, to see, because some of those smaller vendors have products available readily. And so that's kind of why we're putting in front of you, because we feel like we need that flexibility to be able to stock up our, our PPE and, and ready for whatever may happen next, which may be mean elementary and/or secondary in-person instruction. So that, that's, it's kind of, I, I would say we're being extra cautious with this, but, but it will definitely be used, even if we stock up our stockpile, even over time, whether it be the, you know, the sanitizer or things, trust me, it'll be used. Not, there will be no waste here, because over time, we're going to need it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Since the last meeting, a couple of our colleagues reached out to me and would like to have that discussion, maybe starting maybe elementary in-person. I know we're not ready yet. The numbers tell us we're not ready. I reached out to Dr. Milak and said, if, you know, the next meeting, we're ready to, you know, move, you know, we're not now, but if we are, are we ready? And that kind of triggered, you know, an inventory, what we have. And I did recommend that, yeah, I know we're dealing with, you know, big companies here, this, maybe we should reach out to, you know, local vendors that have, you know, supplies, as long as they meet our specs and the prices are good, and maybe have a discussion with them. So this is just preparing us, you know, hopefully the numbers.
Proactive.
Yeah, correct. Hopefully, the numbers go in the right direction. I've been watching the last couple of days, crossing my finger here. I don't want to jinx anything, but we'll see, we'll see the next couple of weeks how it goes, and obviously following what the county tells us and what the state tells us. But that's triggered this discussion with a couple of our colleagues. You good with that, trustee Moser?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Any other questions on any other action item? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Trust, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote?
Lane, yes. Need?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Petrikov?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Secretary, can we go to number six now, please?
Yes, number six. The motion is moved to approve the appointments of Alfonso Avila Jr., Renata Peak Brooms, Matt O'Brien, and Robert L. Turfey, the Henry Ford College Foundation Board of Directors for a term beginning December 10th, 2020, until December 2020.
So moved.
So I got.
The motion, it's moved by trustee Petrikov, supported by trustee Dr. Mead. Trustee Lane, you had questions on this action item?
Yes, well, questions and a request that could be a request for future information, and just some observations myself. I see that, that the folks that are nominated here are a diverse group of people. They have really interesting backgrounds. I know that they will serve the college well. And I'm, I'm very appreciative that they will spend their time helping push our college forward. What I don't know, and I would like to know more about, is how broad is our foundation? Philanthropy is something that has been studied more, and there's training now for philanthropy. I don't know whether we orient board members on our foundation. I don't know exactly what we require of, of our board members. I don't know how they're vetted. I don't know, does our, our foundation board represent so many multiple experiences and voices in our community? So for example, I can see that these folks have different ethnic backgrounds, and, and I'm really pleased with that. Do they have diversity also, because I, I don't know them, and I didn't Google them. I mean, I did a little bit, but do they have diversity in age, in economic background, in life experience, perhaps even being an alum of this college? Do they have connections to the college? I just want to make sure that, that we have a really good spectrum of input to the College Foundation. Thank you, trustee McDonald, for serving on that board. I know you have, and I don't know anybody, if anyone else here has.
Trustee Thorpe is currently.
Thank you. Yeah, so I would just like to have a presentation on how do we vet people? How do we assure? How do we assure Mr. Best and Mr. Cavalluna? How do we assure that we have people? And one other thing that I just feel I have to give a pitch for, besides board training, and there is board training by nonprofit enterprise at work, since this is a nonprofit board, or it's a board to raise money for the college. I have to give a pitch for nonprofit enterprise at work in Ann Arbor. I've attended their sessions on board training, how you can be a good board member, how board service should be. Board members, what's expected for board members? What about board bylaws? How should a board be engaged in fundraising? I would recommend that. And then lastly, you know, then let, you know, my questions rest. I want to be sure, I know the point of a foundation is to raise money. And normally, that means that these are people who have contacts. They're philanthropic themselves. They raise money. They donate money. But we need real voices, especially in, on a foundation that raises money for students, to assure that we're not just us old folks, old fogies, talking about what students need. We need to have student voices. We need to have the voices of some people at least, who are not economically privileged. So I'd like to have some feedback on that. I'd like to have some assurance. I'm hoping that that is the case. So that is what I would like to ask for at some point in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, might I propose a couple of options to the board for these types of requests? I think you're saying yes, Mr. Chairman. Couple of options. We can dive in right now. I see Vice President Best is ready at the willing with his camera on. We can start engaging on that topic. It's something he's well-versed in, as am I. And then during that discussion tonight, if we decide to do it, Trustee Thor represents the board on this issue, on this. And we could do that. We could also set up a time for the board to have a committee or a report from any one of the individuals that this board has representation and knowledge about. That would be Trustee Thor, Vice President Best, who serves as essentially the executive director of that board on behalf of the board. And then, of course, we could have the officers or one of the chairman of the board, or the vice chair, whoever from that board would want to address all the processes. Or, you know, we could also take this up in a board retreat, because Trustee Lane has brought up some questions and some good comments about training and whether and if the foundation board does training for its board members. So all of these answers are good questions to ask, and answers can be delivered. I just, I'll take the board, the chair's direction on what's the best way to proceed with them.
Sure. Trustee Lane, what would you be most comfortable with?
Personally, I'd rather have a presentation later. It could be at a board retreat. That would be fine. That'd be great by me. Whatever kind of retreat we can retreat to these days. And I think that would be more thoughtful. Some questions could be answered now, but I think it'd be a more nuanced presentation, and it'd be more informative later, I think.
I agree with you. And the other reason that's probably a good thing, I don't want all these, "Thank you for serving," but these four, I don't want it to be "but them." So we just want to report about the whole board, so.
Oh, absolutely. It's not, I'm not in any way questioning.
We are very thankful for their service.
Yes.
Yeah, so, does that work, President Cavalluna?
Yes, and the only thing I'll note is, Mr. Chairman, I will be in touch with you, and I'll ask you to communicate with the board on when we want to do a retreat. We have historically, during my tenure, done them in December. But we can do them, and we've only done one a year. So we could do multiple a year. We could break them up into shorter sessions for deep dives on actual topics, rather than holding you hostage for an entire half-day or day, like I've usually done. Absolutely. I'll engage the chair through the board, through the chair, and we'll figure out what best serves this need for a retreat.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this action item? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Petlikov?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Barry?
Again, thank you for their service, and I, yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees' Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
I don't see anything. Okay, next item, please.
Board Committee Reports.
I know we have the Audit Committee. Matt, who's the chair of that committee? Trustee Petrikov, please.
That would be me.
Please.
Yeah, we did report out on this last week as well, because it had a time sensitivity issue. The audit has begun. And I believe at last week's meeting, and I'm going to have to kind of go with my memory on this now, we did discuss the parameters of what the audit would include and where they're at, and they will report back, I believe, in October. Mr. Sakowski, is it October that they give the final report? He's muted.
I think that's right.
Yeah, as I recall.
That's correct.
And I did, I did inform everyone that if anyone has anything that they have a question about with our finances, to, they can direct a question to any of the board members, any board members who have questions, and we can forward that information to the auditors who are handling the audit. I'm hoping that President Cavalluna may even have access to providing the contact information as well. I sent it to all the board members of our auditors so that it could be shared with anyone who wants to get in contact with them if they have a concern that they would like looked into during the audit. The audit is more of a larger, general framework of the health of our financial institution, rather than a intricate measure of each and every component. So they do random sampling. So if anybody has something in particular they want looked at, they would have to have a conversation with the auditors.
Trustee Lane?
I was in the meeting with Trustee Petlikov. Of course, she's reported correctly. I just want to make sure that it's clearly stated that if any citizen, any person on the board, not on the board, anyone in the community, not in the community, anybody can report they don't have any fraud or misappropriation of funds. Any suspicion of that can be raised with the auditors directly. It does not have to go through us as a board. And if there is any question as to appropriateness, it should be raised.
Yes.
When I said contact the board, it's just for the contact information of the auditor for anybody. That's what I meant.
Through us. They can report it direct, anybody can report anything directly to them.
Yeah, yeah. Don't, you don't need to say it to us. We have the contact information, is all I was trying to.
Is the contact information anywhere else?
President Cavalluna, have we posted that anywhere?
No, I'm not sure. I'm certain it's part of the minutes for this board. But we've had a relationship with the auditors for quite some time. So, I don't know, Vice President Sakowski, do you know if we?
Not, no, not that I'm aware of. Normally, Trustee Petlikov and Secretary Lane put it succinctly that, yes, that the discussion was regarding if there's any issues that anybody, community member, internal employee member, whatever, has an issue, they should contact the auditors directly. But we don't, don't believe there's anything website-related or anything regarding the contact for that, either on, the information's on the transparency webpage with regards to the audit, who the auditors are, but there's nothing distinctly stating anything related to that, from my knowledge.
But the auditors are from Plant Moran.
Yeah, yes.
And that's public information. So anyone interested could get their email and their phone. We read it aloud. I read it aloud before at the P-12 meeting. So it's public information. They were worried about getting inundated with all kinds of information, but it hasn't happened, and I doubt it would happen.
Just to elaborate, yeah, we're planning to have the audit available before the October board meeting due to timeframe issues and filing issues. We're not sure what the state is doing, whether or not there's some change, going to be any change to that. But our field work is done. I mean, my staff did an incredible job getting things done and to the auditors timely. So we're pretty much, you know, done with that field work. Barb's getting a well, well-deserved vacation this week, is what she's doing for stepping up to the plate with David retiring. And I got to give yeoman's effort to all of them with Kevin and Brian. All of them. So we're on track, just to let you know. And the idea is to have the audit committee, audit presented to the audit committee before the next regular scheduled board meeting, unless, you know, the state does some changes to the dates, is what it would be.
Great, thank you. I think that's the only committee that met.
No, the foundation meeting happened a couple of weeks ago also for any Florida foundation. We already talked a little bit about the nominating committee had brought forward the names that we, as a board, just approved. We also received financial reports and some reports on scholarships.
Great. Any questions for Trustee Thor? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I just quickly run down my notes for the request for information I've received so far from this board meeting, so I make sure I get them all?
Please, yes.
Okay, I've got Trustee Lane interested in any data available for individuals accessing the campus and needing to use the paper form. I have, I don't remember who, but a trustee interested, I think it was Trustee McDonald, interested in knowing if an individual can obtain a GED and then continue on and obtain college education through the Futures for Frontliners program. I have Trustee Moser interested in what steps HFC will take at all to increase marketing to drive enrollment for the Futures for Frontliners program. And I'm sorry to do this, but do any trustees remember another, other things they asked me? And I said I didn't know, and I get them information, so I can take them down now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything I can think of, too, is Secretary Lane asked for their report on.
Oh, yes. The foundation, getting, finding it, yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next item, then, please.
I would like to make a comment.
Please.
We thank you, President Cavalluna, for giving us information about the VASP. What can I say? I mean, there's hundreds of years of experience and dedication with the people who are leaving. I was, I noted that several of them are going to hit departments particularly hard. Nursing and counseling were two that came to mind. Obviously, a lot of the retirees are coming out of teaching faculty. And my sincere congratulations to them. I hope that they will have a long and fruitful retirement. But I would like to ask President Cavalluna or anyone else if we have any information or expectations about how easy it will be, particularly to fill the nursing positions. I know that when I've been at different medical facilities, I'll have somebody who actually tells me that they graduated from Henry Ford Nursing. And then we have a pretty extended conversation. I'm very proud to see that. But they've told me, people have said before, "Yeah, it's kind of a pain in the neck, because I can get more money elsewhere." So that's what a lot of teaching is. People can make more money in business, but it's public service, and it's paying forward our debt to society. So I'm very, very appreciative, because I know that people could make more money elsewhere. But I fear that it'll be difficult, especially in COVID times, to replace them. So it's never easy to replace good people. I mean, you never do exactly replace good people, put another person in who has different skills and learns new things. But I would like to know, I hope, I'm sure we'll fill the positions. But good luck, President Cavalluna and faculty.
Trustee Lane, I can't speak directly to the, how difficult or lack of difficult it is to replace nursing faculty, but I can tell you this, that one of the things that I appreciate, sixteen fifty and its leadership, John McDonald Negotiating Committee, for having allowed to be part of the VASP agreement, is the liberty for the administration to allow individuals who want to take the VASP for us to ask them, and candidly, to direct that they stay on and teach for a future amount of time, in order to blunt some of the concerns you've just described. And of course, Dr. Nealon and his deans are looking through that, because the applications for VASPs just ended last week. So that process is ongoing in deciding what it will take to replace VASPs so that our students don't suffer as a result, and whether and if there's a necessity to keep some VASP takers at the college for extended amounts beyond just this term.
Just one other point. In reading background information, there was some discussion of nursing. And I know that nursing, for several years, has been considered to be moved as a four-year degree to community colleges. So as usual, I just want to put in my two cents worth of information. And part of this is personal experience. I think it's probably appropriate. I know the four-year universities will not like it. But I would like to, I'd like to note to you, President Cavalluna, or anyone else who's talking to political leaders, nursing originally started as training at hospitals. My grandmother was trained, was training at a hospital for nursing, for an RN degree. I'm not really sure what degree they, they were actually even issuing. Then it started to be more professionalized, and training moved to different places, as happened with the Henry Ford Trade School. Training has been accomplished at different places. So I would make the same pitch, President Cavalluna or anyone else, when you're talking to any political leaders. Yeah, that's been the province of four-year universities, but life changes. We have a great need now for nurses. We have a need for medical personnel. And I hope that the pandemic will be able to, I mean, I hope that our training will suffice. So it may be a good time, maybe, to have more training available and have it at different places. We've always talked about expanding our nursing program, because we have a high-quality program where graduates pass their exam easily, or, well, not easily, but with high success. So I'd like to see a four-year. Initially, I was not sure, and I think that even a couple of years ago, I expressed reservations about whether four-year degrees should be issued by community colleges. But considering everything that's happened in the world, I think it's something that maybe I would revisit and think again on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure the whole board and everyone else on the call knew the type of collaboration and the behind-the-scenes action that can happen before a board meeting. I had the privilege to be with both President Cavalluna and Superintendent Maliko earlier during the day. And when the questions were coming in about several different items, they were quickly responding to everything, getting ahold of their team, talking to each other, and then disseminating the information back out to the board. So I got to see how the sausage was made today, and they did a great job.
Are you saying it?
Are you saying it was a lovely sight?
You, you take for granted some of the things that we will ask them for. And we just assume that, well, we know they're gonna get it done. We don't necessarily know how they're gonna get it done. We just know they'll get it done. So now it's a, I thank you for everybody who is in the background working to get us this information we request.
Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to reiterate what Secretary Lane was just saying and just say two things, access and affordability. I think they're just key, especially with the need of nursing program. And, and I think that's what the colleges like we enable students to have, access and affordability. And while you've called on me, the one other thing I wanted to say, I just wanted to commend the strategic enrollment team and everyone that has had a hand in making the success, how difficult it's to come in below the shortfall that we were expecting in enrollment. And to come in better than we expected and much better than most of the colleges in our area. I just have to give kudos to the entire team for that.
Thank you. Anybody else under comments? Trustee Moser?
Yes, I, I'd like to also commend the outgoing faculty. I've always said that the backbone of community colleges and universities are those who are in the classrooms or teaching. So thanks to them for their service. We appreciate them and we appreciate those who are hanging around when needed, especially in those rare areas. So thank you so much for that. We really, really appreciate you being here with us.
You know.
Anybody else? Okay, next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Did we, we didn't do board member commentary.
We just did.
Kind of nonchalantly.
Yeah, I think it's done.
I asked for next item, then I know.
That was commentary.
The, I'll up on some future agenda items and we just naturally wanted to come. Are there any other comments by board members or President Cavalluna?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say one thing. I plan to make a big splash about all of the faculty members who are planning to leave the college. And I completely agree with everything my colleagues on the board here have, and trustees have said. The only reason I'm not doing the hoopla now is, and I don't blame you for doing it yourselves, the VASP application is, goes in a process where faculty members apply and that window closed last weekend. And then they have a certain amount of time to withdraw their application. So we're, we're waiting just a little longer until we know the final process. And then, of course, to the extent that this pandemic will let us do it, we're gonna have a, a quite a, quite a recognition of these folks. And, and the hundreds of years of devotion to this college that that list shows that we plan to commemorate.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up also, as my colleagues were thanking our full-time faculty that were retiring. That's exactly what I was thinking. They're gonna be around with us till December. So hopefully at the December meeting, we'll do something. You and I will talk about it. Anything else?
Hopefully we don't have to do it in a Zoom party mode.
We'll be Zoom partying.
I have a feeling as well.
All right, let's stay positive. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, October 12th, 2020, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the Governor's Executive Order and virtually available live or viewing via YouTube Live. Facebook Live, www.facebook.com/DeerbornPublicSchools and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel 19 and WOW Channel 50. Monday, October 19th, 2020, HFC Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, 6:00 PM via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at www.hfcc.edu/board-meetings-schedule. Monday, October 19th, 2020, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at www.hfcc.edu/board-meetings-schedule.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.